Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the March 30th Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have a very simple and easy, at least in theory, agenda tonight. We're just going to be going over the FY '21 and FY '22 budget, getting ready for town meeting. I'm just gonna pause for a couple minutes, wait for the town manager to re-enter the room and get settled, and we can kick it off. And I appreciate everybody taking time out of their evening to come down and review the budget with us.
Well, are you ready, Matt? Do you need another minute?
You guys walk off a little while.
I did. I stole all your stuff.
Typical.
Well, that's how I go. So, we've already done the pledge and everything else, and we've called the meeting to order. And I'm gonna defer a little bit to you, Matt, and kinda walk us through the spreadsheet and what you've put in front of us with your TA budget submission.
A little bit of, we wanted to share the screen, but just getting paper to come out of the printer was a small miracle. So, I think everybody can get one of these.
Oh, I like that one.
Oh, this is the first six. Bear with me, Mr. Chairman. One, two, three. New operating software, new printers, new copiers. Everything's upside down and backwards in two-point font.
Sorry. Well, the tip we put down, we got room.
First and foremost, my apologies for the delay. Each and every year, we try to increase the transparency and documentation of the budget process, along with trying to do the budget. And as a result, there's more and more information coming up, but we have to manage what it looks like, how it comes across. So, the contents of the budget document this year, Mr. Chairman, that are being rolled out. So today, there's the short-form budget that Selectman Bonin often asks for. This is the version of the budget, which will appear in the warrant. So it's all that detail on that great big spreadsheet in front of you, put in the format that town meeting will actually vote, and it's what voters will actually see. It's helpful because if there's any one particular set of line items that interest you, then you can go to the more detailed document. You don't have to start with a detailed document. Detailed document is the Town Municipal Functions Budget only. So when we add in the Douglas Public Schools and Blackstone Valley Tech, they're added in at the end. So all I'm doing in that detailed spreadsheet is the functions that report to the Board of Selectmen and take their funds from the general fund. What we're adding this year is a message from a town administrator, which I believe will summarize most of the major points and policy decisions that inform the budget. The personnel supplement, which
As much as I enjoy a good musical interlude.
I wish everything in life were that easy. Wouldn't it be that easy, right? Remove.
Thank you, Avaya.
But is now Mr. Avaya is not gonna keep him off?
No, he'll be able to come back in if he has the link.
All right. Well, then, that's momentarily. So there's nothing I can do?
You can, there is a block call list that you can start throwing on there, but that, that would take up a good chunk of our meeting to administer that.
All right, let's hope. A budget message, a personnel supplement, the capital budget, which for this year, we've rushed every year to try to get a capital budget into the warrant with any kind of detail after working through all the meetings of the Capital Improvement Committee. And it really ends up being just a list of projects, the rationale, and what the project entails. This year, the capital budget will be a little bit more involved because it will go into the financing mechanisms and other decision points that the Capital Improvement Committee faced. So that's the, that's the general gist of what's there. I'm gonna go through my message since I took the time to try to frame the budget conversation. And then, you know, I'll pause after each section to see if there's any discussion, or if you wanna go to the numbers, or if you just wanna... Listen, this is 14 pages. I think if I can get through each page in a minute, on my hand of it, keep the meeting civil.
Then you're cooking with fire.
Do you have, by chance, another copy of that? Want to read along?
Oh, well, if I give it to you, I don't have it.
Right, okay, that's all right.
Does anybody have a, there that?
You, you need one of these? I mean, I can look at it.
Yeah.
Who needs it?
Well, I don't know if, I'm special, but I don't know if I need to be the only one that has it.
No, Tim, you can have it.
Want me to want me a copy?
No, it's okay. It's all right.
Thank you. We'll listen to Matt.
We'll listen to Matt. As long as Tim's got it.
I'm a visual guy. I don't know what to tell you.
So you need charts, not words. The message on page one is that every single budget we've prepared, and this is my fourth budget working for you, has been a challenge in one shape or form. Year one, there was a conversation about an override budget versus the, a contingent budget versus the base budget. In year two, we had to resolve health insurance and the considerable additional cost of that year's potential renewal. Obviously, last year was the COVID year, so we didn't actually get to do a budget. We did a month-to-month budget, and we finally got to the budget in September and had to hurry up and fix it in November. And here we are in March with another budget. The challenge is different. The challenge of doing the budget for the Town of Douglas for the foreseeable future is that you are not at rock bottom the way you were in '12, '13, '14, and '15. It's a really different way to do a budget. Instead of taking what you wanna do and paring it down and trying to manage relationships and service delivery levels, you are trying to build a budget up, balancing the competing needs of various departments and initiatives of the town, and trying to finance as many of them as you can with the resources as they grow and to stay on pace with the growth and not get ahead of yourself or lock yourself into dangerous spending patterns. Fiscal '22 is probably the first year of about a three-year transition process of fully pivoting the town's operational finances to the point where they're sustainable for the long term. So there are a number of moves made in this budget that will start a process that will last about three years. Despite the challenge, what COVID has done for municipal government, it has accelerated the modernization of our operations. We're allowing workers to do a lot of their work remote. We want our customers to be able to get the things they need remotely if they can. All of this convenience factor has become part of people's expectations going forward, that if they want a permit, they can sign in on their computer. They wanna share documents if they're on a border commission and they wanna be able to see what everybody's talking about, there's a place to go. So we've built an information technology network for the Town of Douglas that will be able to handle these demands. And we've bought the software and rolled out. E-permitting is live. We're beginning to collaborate online with a number of our documents. Most importantly, economic development efforts are beginning to bear significant fruit. And there's the added aspect of all this federal aid that's coming into us for a variety of purposes, and making sure that we use that federal assistance to address the longstanding needs of the town and not just on projects that might be popular for the second. The ongoing professionalization of the employee base of the town is continuing. This year was a monumental year with the Douglas Police Department achieving accreditation. The Fire and Ambulance Department now has probably more credentialed firefighter, paramedics, or those that are progressing toward that goal than they have ever had before. The Highway Department and Building Department has fully adapted to the state's acceptance of OSHA standards. And the other thing that's changing rapidly in our employee base is that a lot of our most experienced people are beginning to retire. And that is gonna be part of the trend for the next two or three years, is that we will not only have to budget for ongoing operations, we're gonna have to recognize that the challenge of training people and bringing them up to speed, at least to a level reasonably competitive with all of our experienced folks, is gonna take some time and patience. The demand on town resources has been less financial and more on our employees. So every single department has stretched thin for one reason or another. So, in addition to all of our normal functions, we staffed up a second ambulance. Staff was reassigned to a variety of different tasks. We're managing all of this federal funding that's coming through in addition to the jobs that we already had. The town is entering fiscal '22 in a stronger financial position than it has experienced in many years. Outside of snow and ice operations, free cash is not being used for operational funding. And new growth has consistently come in at three or four times projected level each year for the last three years. While we had a number of unique events that contributed to this, and they won't be replicated, it is still a fact that for fiscal '20, the town certified free cash at $2.726 million, which is about 9% of our operating budget, which is the municipality, the schools, and less the service on our excluded debt. Revenues will be up 2.2% this year, and expenditures increased by 2.8%. You wonder, how does that end up in a balanced budget? Because this budget balance is to zero. And the answer is, last year, we constricted our operations because we thought that the state was going to cut our revenues significantly. So we, we got real small. We got as small as we could in a hurry, anyway. But our revenues didn't drop off. The revenues of the town kept pace with past projections. So we opened a bit of a gap between the operating budget and what we took in. That's part of what drove free cash to the number it got to. It's also why this, this year, we're growing expenditures at a more rapid race, pace than revenues, but we're still not getting past them. Okay? One of the major recommendations in the budget, I'm recommending a 1% cost of living adjustment to all non-union employees under the supervision of the Board of Selectmen. I'm proposing an amendment to the personnel by law to add a longevity trench for our long-serving employees. Those who have served the town faithfully for 15 or more years would receive $1,000 bonus as a result of that amendment. Financial impact is about $15,000. This board is requesting town meeting approval of a stipend increase for its own operations. This year, our longstanding administrative assistant in the Board of Selectmen office will retire, and the budget reflects a couple of retirements the same way. We anticipate that we will hire that person's replacement and put them on the payroll well before the person leaves town service. We'll have a full training period in transition. And then for those people who are leaving, who still have vacation accruals, we have to keep them on the payroll until the vacation's paid out. So all of those factors come into the personnel budget, specifically with Suzanne's position, and we're planning on the principal assessor retiring at the end of December. So all of that had to be built into the budget. This is the first budget year where a number of personnel changes that were approved by special town meeting this fall fully impact the budget. So for the first time in a full-year budget, you see the salary for the Assistant Chief of the Fire and Ambulance Department. It's the first full year of budget for the upgrade of the Building Commissioner from a part-time to a full-time position. And it's also the first full year of budget for the part-time position of Economic Development Facilitator. We've also managed to fill longstanding vacancies. So, in the Highway, we've always budgeted for a new laborer position. Were not able to get a fully qualified person. We finally found someone. So a little bit of that play in the compensation budget over Highway has closed up quite a bit. Budget reflects that as well. We've also increased the part-time salary line in the Ambulance Department. As long as we staff a second ambulance, the hope is that the revenue growth will be there to sustain it, but also, in terms of managing the department, it is a far more compelling case to make, to have per diems and part-time people scheduled so they are in the station responding to calls, because that's why people sign up, frankly, to serve, is to be actively involved in calls. If all we do with staff is call them in for station coverage when the rest of the staff is, is going out on calls, they're really, that's a babysitter service. People don't go through that kind of training and preparation to serve that function. So I think we're doing much better, getting more people involved and getting them committed, having sufficient budget. The other part of this is that, one of the unique things about the fire service, there are grant programs that help municipalities gradually staff up when the need arises. We're not there yet. We're not ready to apply for a safer grant because the call volume doesn't suggest it just yet. However, with all the economic development going on in town and a pipeline full of subdivisions and new homes to be built in the next couple of years, we may soon push that threshold. The worst thing anybody can do in managing staffing levels in an emergency response department is to come back to the town and say, I'm gonna add one person to every shift starting tomorrow. So that's three people, right? And if they all take benefits and they're all making $75,000 a year, let's call it 60. It's a quarter of a million-dollar investment that you hit town meeting with all at once. We're suggesting a strategy of incrementalism. We will gradually move to have more part-timers getting more time. Perhaps we will work out with the union a split shift or some other reduced shift option for the high-volume call times, and then get the safer grant that will feather in the salaries of new people. It's a five- or six-year transition period, not a one-year period.
Matt, on those, is that, would you say that's bolstering the Call Fire Department? Or is that bolstering the already very professional? I don't wanna say Call Fire Fighters are not professional, but I think I just...
I know what you're, no, no. I think people understand.
No, I know, I'm gonna go with it. You know what I'm saying?
I do.
Are we bolstering the Call Fire Department or the, the full-time or the, well, the part-time, but professional firefighters?
Most importantly, you're bolstering coverage for the town. As we, it's not unusual to have two ambulances out. Your, what you're doing is you're providing more active opportunity for the part-time call staff to build relationships with and get into the rhythm of the full-time department and to be a more cohesive unit. Anything beyond that, I let the chief and assistant chief pick up, but I think that's probably the strongest message of it, is that there is no substitute for experience in what these people do. And the more exposure they get, the better prepared they are to be involved, and the better quality they generate when they are involved. Does that answer your question?
I think so. I mean, clearly, the Fire Department from where we were when I first came aboard and where we are now is considerably different, and kudos to you, Chief and Chief, Adam and the assistants. I think it's important that we continue to progress. I do. My one concern, though, is, and this was instilled in me very, very early, is the inclination to move away from the Call Fire Department, which, you know, that may be the case, you know, over the long term, but I still think there's still a lot of value in pursuing that, that facet.
Yeah, I think this is how you keep it. I think this is how you motivate people to join and stick around. Even if you went, say, for the sake of argument, it's not true, but say that all of our full-time shifts right now are two, two people, right? Going to three doesn't mean that you've got it nailed. It just means you have three full-time when before you had two per shift, but you're still gonna use call. There, I don't, I can't imagine any scenario in the next decade or even two decades where the Call Department, the Call part of the Douglas Fire Department goes away. I can't imagine that.
Good. Thank you.
The last note I'd make about employees is as people retire, we will have one year where we spend extra because of the transition. The following year, we'll recognize savings in those positions because the new hires will be progressing through more junior steps than the person who left at the top step. When we did, so I'm gonna turn now to expense budgets. I'm on page 5 of 14. I think I'm keeping pace. Last year, we did an across-the-board 2.5% cut to all expense budgets across all departments with more than $2,000 in their expense budget. It was part of an effort to prepare for revenue shortfalls. That move left a couple of departments really tight, specifically Highway and Fire, as we get to the end of this fiscal year, and a number of issues have arisen. There was room in the budget to restore the 2.5% reduction and then give additional increases to expense budgets. It was not a lot of money, but it was necessary to do it. The Fire and Ambulance in particular has been underfunded for many years, and I think part of the, there's a bunch of pieces that come together here. One is, the department, pardon me, experienced a fair amount of success applying for grants and getting supplies from other sources. It was mostly a Call Department. Only more recently, over the last four or five years, has gone to any kind of substantial full-time component. And there's this notion that perhaps some of these major expenses cross the line into being capital expenditures. One of the things I feel very strongly about is, it's not capital. If it's personal to the individual employee, it's turnout gear that's been fitted to that individual's body, and has a useful life, maybe five years, but maybe not five years, depending on how much it gets used and abused, and is it absolutely necessary for the, for the department to function? It is. We can't send firefighters into danger without proper protective gear. So, the program that is needed and the spending pattern that needs to be established is that the Fire Department will have ample resources each year to replace at least some turnout gear, some self-contained breathing apparatus, and some fire hose every single year to keep pace with the lifespan of those items and just the wear and tear. It's not unusual for firefighters to come back, especially, it seems, with some of these forest fire incidents with hose that just got run over or got burned and leaks and needs to be replaced. That shouldn't be a budget buster. We should have resources in the expense budget to handle those real needs. We're also working pretty hard to make sure that we have service contracts in place for all of our appliances and our major assets in our buildings. Our risk management, when it comes to our built environment, has really fallen down, and that's showing up with all the incidents that we've had to deal with of disrepair or lack of attention or simply aging, causing failures of significant appliances. I have no idea what this cleanup is gonna cost in this building for this oil spill. They're still here. I think, you know, penguins are gonna crawl out of that hole any second now as they go all the way to the South Pole. You'll see expense increases in the Civil Defense budget. Those are year-to-year service contracts and maintenance effort with the new public safety radio system. So, this idea that we're gonna try to find somebody who's increasingly more difficult to find every time we try to find him to repair stuff, not happening. So, public safety radio is a 24/7/365 necessity. Our service contract with the new provider will be that they will come whenever we need them, and there is a cost to that. And routine maintenance. There have been a couple of other requests that we've worked to put into the budget. The ongoing effort every single year is to gradually increase the snow and ice budget so that we get closer and closer to approximating a mild winter's expense. So, we don't wanna over-budget snow and ice. We do have more flexibility around snow and ice than we do other accounts. At the same time, it would be nice to look at free cash and say, well, we're not gonna have to touch that this year because we put enough aside for a typical New England winter. So it's never not gonna snow. If we got to that point, we, we've had quite an unusual year. So, from my quick analysis, we've really never spent less, in the recent memory, less than $230,000, $240,000 a year in snow and ice. Most of the time, it's over $300,000. So, if we just keep putting an extra $10,000 in every year, we'll gradually get to the point where that budget is a little bit more realistic. There are a number of changes at the Board of Health that are requested, requesting part-time assistance, requesting additional hours and budget for the public's health nurse, and all of those items were able to fit into the budget.
I don't wanna be the only selectman to weigh in, so please, you know, free guys, but...
So I'm at the logical break. That's the end of my employees and expenses stuff, so...
The, the nurse has clearly done a remarkable job. No one really signed up to be the town nurse when the pandemic hit. Are we recognizing that in here?
Well, I think we should recognize the great service she gave and is continuing to give as one of the people who put together the clinic in Oxbridge, really happy to have Agnieszka fully involved. We're accommodating her request for extra hours and to be paid for those hours, because I think she's put in a lot of time that she hasn't been compensated for. To this point, we've had some funds that have flowed through the Department of Public Health and the state through these micro grants that have come through at different points in the pandemic, but we're looking at almost double her time. There really isn't gonna be any way to wrap this up without her being here a lot more than seven hours a week. Okay? Is there anything else on compensation or expenses before I turn to town-wide expenses? I've alluded to it already, property and casualty insurance. I have budgeted at a 15% year-over-year premium increase, pretty much at the advice of the person who places this, these policies for us. We are exploring, and we've gotten pretty good headway on exploring, at least with Maya, the possibility of increasing our deductible. Our deductible's pretty low, at $2,500. If we raise the deductible to $10,000, the premium savings would be $19,000. But you have to know where you're gonna get the $10,000 because you have to pay the bill. So, at the moment, we feel like we're over. So at 15% premium increase, if we did this, savings by increasing the deductible, there would be sufficient funds in the property and casualty line item in the budget to cover the deductible. That's the strategy. Going forward, everything that we do in capital improvement has to be done through the lens of what is going to help us escape some of our risk exposure with some of our older buildings and some of the older pieces of equipment in them. A lot of progress has been made. Next year's gonna be a good year in terms of being able to fix a roof here because capital approved that budget. But we are still going to have to keep a very close eye on virtually everything that we operate to make sure we don't expose... to make sure we don't expose ourselves any further. We are well over 400% of premium on our loss ratio. Health insurance, when you pass the health insurance policy for the town, the standard offer, this is probably just about two years ago now, there was a reporting requirement. A lot of what I have in this budget message meets the requirements of that reporting requirement. So I won't get into every single last detail. I will only say this much, that at some point, either tonight or in your next meeting, I am requesting that the Board of Selectmen take a formal vote to authorize me to spend up to $87,000 of the town's reserve trust funds from last year's surplus to smooth out our premium experience with the self-insured group. Even if we, so if we do a 7% premium increase this year, it was 2% last year and 1.2% the year before. So by my math, 10% in three years is pretty gosh darn good for health insurance. We've, we've done an awful lot of good work to beat the system. We had two incredibly expensive claims this year. And right now, our rates are being set without reference to stop loss. By the end of the fiscal year, stop loss will reimburse us for all the claim activity over $150,000. But the underwriter's only going to factor in 50% of our stop loss reimbursements when setting our rates. So he came up with a 10-point something, between 10 and 11. We're going to take on seven and leave three to pick up next year. Part of this is because our employees have a premium co-share. You don't really want to hit them with a 10%. The other thing that's important is that those two really big claimants have termed out of our policy. They've either passed away or they've aged into Medicare, but they are no longer in our active enroll, enrollee population. So we don't expect those same people to repeat their claims activity again next year. It's a very important fact. So the rest of this page and a half goes into some explanation of, of how having a TPA, which is unique in Massachusetts, very nearly new, unique in New England, is really working out for us in terms of saving on health insurance. Our census is changing. So where any number of people, we have a decrease of 12 individual plans, an increase of only two family plans. We will carry five extra family plans and two extra individual plans in order to accommodate changes within the population. The town's share of premium and HSA expenses for a family plan is about $19,400 per. For every 1% change in the working rate, that's about $22,800. So you can see for every percentage point increase in our premium rate, if we have X number of people drop their plans and they're no longer with us, our bottom-line budget for health insurance doesn't change much. Okay, so the rates went up, the census went down, so the actual spending line in the budget is pretty much what it was last year. On education, I get verbose here. What, what I'm really trying to get to is that our dialogue with all of our educational spending items has to intensify significantly over the next three years. It is unsustainable for a municipality that has its own public school system to underfund that public school system to the point where it becomes a liability in marketing the town to residents. And the, we pay the price. When people vote with their feet, it's one thing if they choice into another public school. But if they choice into BVT or Norfolk Aggie, the tuition is significant. And so the taxpayer actually bears the brunt. If you don't want to fund your public schools, you're still going to fund education because the kids are going to go somewhere else that's more expensive. Having said all of that, there is a way to have a conversation with the public school system about how we're going to fund their operations. There are three key steps that I think need to be taken in Douglas. One is, the single most dynamic aspect of the school budget, which is the growth and the compensation of people represented by the Douglas Teachers Association year-over-year, is at a rate that is not sustainable for the town. The math of the school budget is that so long as Chapter 70 remains a large chunk of money, but it doesn't grow, every increase in that budget is coming from the town. So if the overall budget went up 1.5% on the bottom line, the local contribution coming from the town is going up a lot faster than 1.5%. It's closer to almost 3%. That's not a pattern the town can sustain if its revenues only grow at 2% a year. It's only a matter of time before you run out. So as we progress in negotiations with the teachers' union, and we head into the fall with Fall Town Meeting being the critical deadline, my proposal is that substantial funds be set aside after Town Meeting to engage in a conversation about changing the way the compensation table works for the Douglas Teachers Association in their contract talks. So steps, lanes, colas, even if half of your people are at the top step and all they get is a cola, the other half are progressing. They're getting more education, they're staying longer, and they're getting a cola. And as that works out, the math is inexorable. It's 3% or more every single fiscal year. There should be a way, there is a way to fix that, to get it to match the rate of growth of revenue year-over-year. That is the huge opportunity for everyone, for the public school system, its leadership, the school committee, the teachers themselves, and the town. If everybody's growing at the same rate with the revenues of the town, anything you can put together that's extra is worth investing if you can be convinced that it's a good investment to make. Because it is the choice of Town Meeting and no one else, whether or not to fund those choices. The two other steps that need to be taken would pave the way for Town Meeting to have comfort in providing those investments. Step one, make sure that financial management is buttoned up, right down to the T. I don't say things because I don't mean them. I'd rather not be in conflict with anybody, but I would prefer to have stronger fiscal measures in place in a number of ways. It really wasn't a suggestion to get a good, solid inventory system to manage the school's smaller assets. It really wasn't. It was politely, at first, a suggestion, but it really isn't. The financial management of the town is the sole responsibility of the Board of Selectmen and the people you hire to assist you in that task, a town administrator and a finance director. Our auditors only make sure that our processes and procedures check out. They have no opinion and they have no place to suggest means of fiscal control. That is not their job. That job belongs to the management of the town. And my recommendation is, we have to amp it up. We have to address ongoing issues with priorities and methods to get to a stronger place and to be able to assure people who are about to spend more money that it's wisely spent. The last piece, and it's the piece that everybody should get excited about, is, okay, so if we got this to this place where the public had confidence in the, in the way things were being run, and the hard work was done to get the budget to grow at a reasonable rate every year, so now there's some money left, what's it going to go to? There needs to be a plan. And that is a huge opportunity for the community to come together and build consensus and think about what to do going forward. Superintendent Mainz tried to start this conversation. His focus was on trying to offset the value proposition of both Norfolk Aggie and BVT by bringing some programs online in the public school system to compete with those programs. I don't know if they ever would have worked or not. They just don't seem to, to have materialized. There's an expense associated with it. We're just not there yet. But that whole conversation is a huge opportunity for the leadership of the schools. If they have the patience to work through the rest of what we're basically telling them to do. How do you know? There's a whole page here that goes through, you know, how do you know when you have a very autonomous department with the ability to roll funds forward, where they stand financially and how much you can push? I think their current status is much stronger than it was five or six years ago. So I don't really lose sleep over pushing this budget and pushing the conclusion and budgeting this department at 1.5% on the bottom line because I think that's where they need to be until we can make progress on the other factors. We can absorb an awful lot of their year-over-year need for funding if we can get to an agreement with the teachers by the fall. The competition, so I'm on page 12 now, Mr. Chairman, I'm rolling. The competition is fierce, and I don't think anybody should underestimate the impact of it. As of October, there were 122 high school-aged Douglas residents enrolled at Blackstone Valley Tech, another 10 at Norfolk County Agricultural School. I don't know how many high school students choice out. I plucked a number, 75 to 80, across the department, from K through 12 choice out. For the sake of discussion and discussion only, we've got about 207 students that leave Douglas for another public school district. That public school district, who knows? It's not real popular around here to go to private school, but I'm sure there are people who do. We have about 1,151 enrolled, but we have 165 choicing in. So if you do some quick math, you got about 1,193 school-aged Douglas kids go to a public, come to, have a choice to make, and about 207 of them choose to leave. So that's about 17%. At some point, what is the tipping point? And at the high school, you may be approaching that tipping point. Where, at what level does it become almost impossible to win the competition? After, for whatever reason, a whole panoply of reasons, right? Whether it's athletics or programs or just social opportunities to be with your friends who've gotten into BVT, to go there with them. I'm often reminded of, of the fool's errand. The fool's errand has a name. It's Ripta, the Rhode Island Public Transit Authority, probably the most mismanaged, horrible institution in the world. And I wouldn't compare a school system to them. But I would say this, is that at some point, you cannot run a bus system if you don't have anybody riding it. And the solution always was, well, let's just keep cutting routes because that'll save money. That'll save money. Fewer and fewer people fed into the system. So by the time you get to the hub, the buses were still empty because there was nobody getting on the bus to ride it. Nobody was paying fares. Still running the buses, still, still got all the employees on board. Seems to me a school system would be very simple, was very similar in one respect. You have X number of classrooms. You've got, certain number of teachers have to educate a certain number of kids. A certain number of buses have to get the kids to the school. There's a fixed cost element to all of this. And if you don't have enough kids retiring those fixed costs, contributing to the, getting value out of it, then eventually, the asset will die on the vine. So it's not a trivial thing. A sense of urgency is desperately needed. When it comes to BVT, they're up again, another 11%. Everybody wants to be nice. I know that the chairman of FinCom is done being nice. The past chair of FinCom was done being nice. I'm way past done being nice. I think the arrogance of that department and the way they treat the town of Douglas and the way they refuse to engage us in a meaningful conversation about important stuff is, is absolutely inexcusable. Doing some research and actually using some of their numbers, we figured that we can save them over $525,000 a year on their retiree health insurance spend. For, based on the way I've been treated in conversations, I'm going to not pull any punches. For their lack of creativity and their laziness and what they put into writing, which is one of the dumbest emails I've ever gotten from a professional anywhere, it was put into writing that they didn't want to upset their relationship with their broker. The municipalities that pay the bills be damned, right? We just want to be cozy-cozy with our broker, so we're going to overspend by half a million bucks and pass the bill back on to you, you silly suckers in the town of Douglas. I don't know how long people want to tolerate this, but, you know, someday, when they step up and they actually demonstrate a real commitment to kids with special needs rather than ignoring them and keeping them out, we'll respect what they do. When they actually participate in conversations with us about saving money and doing what's right for their employees, we'll respect what they do. But as for now, they can be a nationally awarded school, but they are not good neighbors and they are not good people. So unfortunately, it's on the budget again. I know everybody feels like it's the man from La Mancha, right? Tilting at windmills to vote no. If you want my opinion and my recommendation, there's 14 pages of recommendations, I still think you should vote no. Because you voted no in the past, and you're only going to undermine the stance you took in the past if you don't stick with it going on to the future. Maybe it's part of being, we always, this is self-deprecating here. We're always at the farm. We always call, consider ourselves crazy Polacks. We would always run, run into a machine gun if it made sense. But listen, giving up isn't part of winning. Never has been. Even in retreat, you can be strategic, but giving up means you've given up. When it comes to school transportation, the vendor's going to be down 4.4% year-over-year. It is one of the reasons why we have a little bit of flexibility in this budget. There are almost two pages here of outlook for future challenges. I don't really think that's relevant to tonight's conversation. I think it was introduction to the budget. I think I've hit most of the highlights. So I'm open to any questions or discussion or next steps.
On the BVT point of it, I agree with you. Like, we should be voting no for every increase that they bring through, but it's kind of a, between ourselves and FinCom and even the school committee, we should try and find a way that we're reaching out to not just, it, it does nothing if just Douglas says no. So if 12 other communities say yes, we got a gun to our head, we have to pay it anyway. Is, we should be reaching out to these other municipalities that are sure are getting picked on the same way that we do. And if we can get five that will hop on board and all say no at the same time, he's then forced to go in and sharpen his pencil and fix the budget. And I think that's where, you know, myself included, we kind of missed the mark and didn't reach out and build those relationships with some of the other towns that BVT services. But I think that would be the first step on that one.
I agree. I mean, if you're, you're asking for bold initiatives. In the back of my mind, I think there's a constitutional claim. And I, and I, I'm not enough of a constitutional scholar to really pinpoint it, right? I know who is.
But he doesn't work for the town.
Yeah, he doesn't work for, for $100 bucks an hour either. But you know what I'm talking about, whether it's equal representation or the way that the, the allocation of expense falls disproportionately on a group that has a minority stake in the outcome. It looks like we're being pinned down and beaten, frankly, at this point. We're the third biggest contributor to the, to the school, and we got to be the ninth or 10th biggest community in the basket that he draws from. So it's, no kidding, it's starting to almost look like it's being done on purpose. But it certainly doesn't feel right that somebody can waltz in, put a bill on the table and say, without really any further action from you, I'll take my 11% increase. Thank you very much. Not all my department heads would love to be able to do that.
I have to say, the straw that broke the camel's back with me was during, when we got the CARES Act funding that started coming into the towns. And I didn't see him delivering any meals. I didn't see him offering any PPE. Did BVT come down and give any PPE to any of you guys? Yet, he comes out and says, how much of your CARES Act money are you going to give to us?
Right.
Like, that was just, that's just bold and arrogant, and I don't care for it. And I, I don't tend to reward that behavior. But we can move past that part.
Well, I think the, your suggestion that we might be able to save the district's towns a half a million dollars is probably a worthy discussion to have with the rest of the, the towns in the, in the. of the, the towns in the BBT network.
Yeah.
In the past, we've said, just vote no, but here's a reason why we might want to.
I'm feeling like the kid who just opened a Willy Wonka bar and had a golden ticket in it, when they decided to decline the $525,000 in savings.
Yeah, right.
Kind of mindlessly foolish at that point.
Well, it's certainly worth a discussion.
$525,000, it'd go a long way in any of our departments, including our own district. I'm sure they'd be very happy to have it.
That's, that's the entire network, half a million.
Yeah, no, it's not, it's the whole system.
All right. So based off of, I don't really have any huge questions on much of the recommendations that have been made by Matt, so.
You have all your department heads here. Do you want to hear from any of them on?
Well, there was a lot to unpack in here. A lot of it's pretty good. You were, what I think what you were asking for is a greater dialogue with the school in respect to some of the potential cost savings and steps that you may think warrant greater discussion. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, I, I'd like to be past roadblocks when it comes to initiatives to do things better, and I'd like to see priorities. My messaging, it's a public document, includes reference to what is the difference between network area storage and a storage area network? I'll leave that to you, but you know.
You want me to get into that now?
The bottom line is really very simple, and I won't, I won't let you shine this time.
You're right in my wheelhouse.
Yeah, I know. And it's not because it's a mistake they make that we didn't make. When we began to investigate our network here, we realized that our network area storage was way too old, and we were running really old servers that were starting to actually, they were starting to melt down. I mean, the data packets were everywhere, and that's a critical part of your entire network backbone. So it keeps, we had to invest, and we basically have not one, but four, okay, of these things, that two of them operate together and the other two back up the frontline two. The school department has only one, and it's a 2007, running a version of Microsoft that may not be serviced much longer. I'm looking for proactive engagement in things that are, that are purely operational. They don't have anything to do with education at all. The education mission in and of itself could keep you busy until you fall asleep at night, but you've still got to do this other stuff. I'm just pulling an example, but I've listened to the same presentation, I think it's at least two years in a row now, looking for town funding to make that. And the first time it came up, it was like, that's, that's an operating expense. Go grab, go grab 14 grand and fix that, please. But, you know, I can't tell people what to do.
Do we get to dive into IT?
No, we don't. Because it's been frustrating enough, and we're trying on this side to really utilize everything that we've put in place, and I think it's coming along very nicely. But I encourage, by the way, this budget process is the trial run, everybody to go to the SharePoint and look at the documents that are being shared, your calendar is there, et cetera, et cetera. It's a new way of doing things.
I'll leave it at this, cloud.
Cloud.
I don't know if we've seen that yet, have we? Access to?
You've been invited, but whether or not you've been able to get in has been one of my travails for the last three weeks.
permissions problems?
Yes. Good, sometimes it's good to have permissions problems, because what it suggests is that we have a much higher level of security than we used to.
Means it works tight.
So we're in the G-suite, we're in the government-level security, and it's been a little bit more challenging to take anyone who doesn't have a douglas-ma.gov address and let them see our documents and participate.
So Matt, on the budgets that we're going through, on the fire department, you talked about safer grants that weren't for staffing of people. I know previously, in chiefs, all three chiefs, correct me if I'm wrong, but turnout gear is primarily, we've been doing, you guys have been using grant money for that all along. So that's kind of, you may or may not get the equipment.
The only time we're not really is if I had like $6,000 for replaceable equipment, and if we lose, a set of turnout gears, $2,500 before helmet and boot. So it doesn't go very far if you lose two full-timers that go off to another department somewhere, things like that. So we're never able to get ahead of the turnout gear for the call guys and for the rest of the staff.
Normal wear and tear on turnout gear, what's the meaningful life on that? What do you figure it would last?
It's supposed to be 10 years, but when it's exposed to fire conditions that are heavy, and you know, it all depends on the extent of the fire, how deep they went into the building, how hot the fire was, things like that.
So an average of five years. We go to a lot of fires, for whatever reason, I'd say more so than the average.
And that, I'm assuming is barring like huge gain of weight, huge loss of weight, stuff like that. And is the way the budget's presented to you currently going to give you a chance to at least maintain, or at least get closer?
It'll give us a start to incrementally, you know, do five or six sets a year, a year, and you know, keep it, keep the old stuff out. And again, we've done grants, so hopefully with this grant, we'll have a jumpstart on, and when we start to put it in the budget, we should, we should be able to keep pace. And to, I want to get off the subject a little bit, I want to answer Tim a little bit. He asked about the call department. When I presented last year to him, we had 18 call guys, we had 18 firefighters, and that included the seven full-timers that we had. We're up to 28 now with call guys. We've hired, we've put through three or four guys in the past few months. The problem is, you put them on, and they want, they want to work. So if another department hires, and a lot of departments have been hired, they'll get the certification, and they'll go over there, they'll still stay on as a call guy here. So I guess, to talk your wheelhouse, baseball and whatnot, the fire marshal always said, you use your call guys as your farm team, they, a lot of them come on, and they develop a love for the fire service, and they want to, they want to become full-time down the line, you know?
Yeah.
If they don't have a big career. I've got one guy that came on as a plumber, journeyman, or apprentice, and went through the fire, no, I want to be a firefighter. So that's the type, so that's what we're trying to build, you know what I'm saying?
No, that's great. So the analogy of sports being, sports coach is actually a really powerful one, because you know, we're both baseball coaches, right? You get that kid that comes to every game and never gets an inning, or only gets junk time, may lose interest. They leave the sport, they don't just go to another team, they just leave the sport.
Thanks, chief. And John, you've got the new employee up at Highway that's working out good for you?
It's working out excellent.
Good deal.
Local kid from town, worked out perfect. It's working out perfect so far.
Is he getting to sleep at night yet, or no?
He get on just before that 44 hours, Tom.
You just missed him.
Just after, I'm sorry, just after.
That's all I had, just a quick clarification. I mean, I didn't see anything in here that stands out to me crazy.
I think yours.
I'm good.
Your report was excellent, Matt.
Yes.
Hopefully you can get a copy.
Someday.
Like Tim has.
Right, Tim's got that now.
He could have mine, I'm done with it.
I do have to say, like, I haven't seen Justin in a while. Where's the duster?
It's warm.
That never stopped you before.
No kidding.
We can't grant you your budget unless you actually have the duster with you.
Right.
Because that's usually what does the request.
Sorry?
Does that make it a budget duster?
Next time.
It does.
There you go.
What's up?
So I mean, just to your report, I mean, I guess it works out to, like, on the school side of it. So Paul, on the educational side, I mean, I'm sure that the school choice outnumber is in the BBT numbers have to be concerning to you as the superintendent.
Absolutely.
So.
We've talked about that in the years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, is there things that you're looking at, like, did you grab any of Kevin's previous ideas, or are you looking outside of the box, or some things to address some of that?
So we'll start with the BBT conversation with respect to my colleague, Mrs. Steele, on the TV. We know we have an issue with kids choicing into BBT. We have, close to two-thirds of our eighth graders apply to BBT this year, and we just found out yesterday, 28 are accepted. So it's another 25%. We know we have an internal marketing issue. For whatever reason, kids are making the choice, and families are making the choice, that they feel that they can be better served outside the Douglas Public Schools. We're aware of that. We started the process this year with the middle school principal, and looking at a few things to change. Unfortunately, he resigned halfway through the year, I had to hire an interim, and now I'm in the process of finalizing his position. So one of the things we're looking at, one, we're looking at doing a schedule change for next year at the middle school. That scheduled change is going to give kids more electives and more specials during the course of the day, to get kids excited about education and excited about what's going on. We're also in the process of looking at, at low, to no-cost things that we can do to get kids engaged at the middle school, but also hook them into the high school area. Things like, how can we set up an after-school intermural program for kids? How can we run dance for kids after school? How can we offer enrichment activities at the middle school for kids after school? We have a plan in place for that going into next year at very low cost to families and to the school district. I want to run that through the middle school. The other thing we're looking to do is having high school teachers run after-school programs at the high school, which kids will take the bus after school from the eighth grade to the high school and get hooked in. So I use the example of Mr. Redden in robotics. How cool would it be to have seven or eight kids from the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade go to the high school and have an after-school program, where you have high school teachers teaching it, and high school kids supporting them, to build bridges and make those connections with kids? I also had a conversation with a colleague who actually is a Vo-Tech director today, and he said, when he started in his school district, they were averaging 188 applicants in their school. One thing they did is they started a summer program, one on their campus, and within two years, they had applications go from 188 to 375. Why? Because kids were coming from communities, seeing the facilities, meeting kids, and meeting teachers. So again, looking at in a few years to build and start a summer program, where for four or five weeks, kids could come to the high school, work with our staff, work with our kids, and get hooked. Those are some things we're doing at low cost to engage kids and keep them hooked in the community. The other piece of it is that marketing and selling and that collaboration. The more we push the message to families of the good things that are happening in the Douglas Public Schools, in our middle school and our high school, the more people are going to be attracted to it. Last week at FinCom, I presented just some of the things that are occurring at the high school over the past three, four years. We've added pathway programs, criminal justice, business, and one of the Punish Escape, I don't have my notes in front of me. So we've added those pathway programs to give kids a career path. We've added AP programs, we've increased our graduation requirements for our language and in art, and we have more kids taking those classes. So the more we can push and promote what we're doing in schools to families, the more people will see the great things that are occurring in our schools. So that's just short-term stuff. To Mr. Wojcik's point, today, I started a meeting at 6:30, where we finalized our strategic plan going forward. So we're putting together what I'll present probably at the first school committee meeting in May, our strategic plan, our priorities over the next three to five years. So what's the vision, what's the direction the Douglas Public School is going in? We'll share that out. We just finalized the document, we've been meeting for three months with a committee of kids, parents, teachers, and part of the leadership team, working on that plan. So we'll have that plan in place. It covers five high-target priority areas of where we're going. So the work that we do, and the funds that we ask for, and our direction are all going to be focused in on those five areas. So we finalized that tonight, I got to make some edits, but I'll present that to the school committee at our first meeting in May. So I can keep on going, it's 8:15 at night.
Yeah.
But I hope that answers some of your questions.
It does. The only question that I have left is, like, there's a, the school choice outnumber is, seems to be kind of growing a little bit, which isn't a good thing. Like, never mind the BBT side of it, just regular school choice out to either a private school or another district. Are you guys tracking that, those metrics, and like, doing almost like an exit interview?
If you want me to turn my computer on to get me some of it?
No, it's okay, not right now, but.
So we are. So we've been tracking school choice out kids, we track school choice in kids, BBT, Norfolk Aggie. This year, we saw a spike in homeschooling, which made sense as a result of the pandemic. But the other one that was surprising was our private school kids out. We saw it, it was pretty flat, it dipped right before the override and right after the override, and the numbers have started coming backed out favorably for kids staying in district. It's not, but you had that spike, was it 17, 18, 19?
Yeah.
So we had that spike, and it's slowly coming back down. We need to work on that.
Okay. Do you guys do any, like, SurveyMonkey or something like that, to go out to the families that are choosing out to try and get a gauge as to, you know, what's driving it?
Well, I haven't been done for a few years. Yeah, it definitely, but it was done a few years back.
So it might be helpful to do, it's like an exit interview. It's like, hey, why are you leaving? So.
Absolutely.
I'm a noisy shit, I had to ask, pardon my French.
I hope that answered your question.
It does.
And there's, I mean, that was a great answer. I've said on this board since, I don't know when, but you know, we always talk about the choice out, and you know, there's some concrete plans to make a tie between the kid and the school and the people within the school, which, yeah, I think is.
I'll use another baseball analogy. Go back to Field of Dreams. If you build it, they will come.
Yeah, no, I.
It's true.
Yeah, no, and I think that's great. I think you have a really, you know, you don't have to look far to see success stories. And I got today a listing of colleges that our Douglas graduates are going to and have graduated from, I suppose, at this time, and it competes with anyone. I think the job of a public school is to provide the best possible education for everyone, but particularly those that really want to roll up their sleeves and get the work and leverage all that's been offered. So, you know, some of this frankly is the parents, for some reason. They think the grass is greener elsewhere, and sometimes I think it's because we have our budget discussions, and we talk about the massive cuts that are going to have to be made, that sometimes get realized and sometimes don't. But changing that narrative and walk proudly, I think is really, really important to assisting and giving the kids a second, a second look at staying here in town.
And to that point, for those of you who follow me on Facebook or Twitter, thanks to Mrs. Carpenter of the High School of Miss Mill. We've been pushing out the profile of the graduate once a week, just highlighting Douglas Public School graduates, and where they went to school, what their career choice, what they're doing now for career, and the impact the public schools had on them. So it's not coming from us, it's coming from graduates showing their success story. So again, we're trying to get that word out there, slowly, of what we're doing within the public schools and the great products that we produce every day.
Well, I think it'll, overall, it'll, I think it'll help the narrative to the school, and it'll alleviate a lot of the concerns. You know, I mean, if we do start working a lot more closely between the town and the district itself, and try and, you know, breach some of the strenuous waters that have been there before.
Good, good.
The more transparency that there is, and the more people see where their tax dollars are going and understand it, the more likely they are to feel more comfortable with whatever decisions they're making. I mean, we are a pretty fiscally conservative town, and I think a lot of people mistake the idea of conservatism, of saying they don't like to spend money, and there isn't a single registered Republican or a conservative out there that has an issue with spending money. We just want to know what's being spent wisely, and you're stretching a dollar as far as you can possibly stretch it before asking for another.
But to that point, in adding the schools to, Mr. Wojcik, step number two, I'm looking for us to let. board of selectors are aware of this, but in our budget this year, we took an in-depth analysis at our staffing and our student ratios. And this year, we eliminated 15.5 positions going into FY '22. We eliminated 13.5 paraprofessionals and two FTEs based off of our current staffing letters, enrollment, and student choice in picking classes. And that's, you know, to your point about squeezing every dollar and making financially responsible decisions. We spent a lot of time analyzing that, and we couldn't put forth a budget knowing that we had more staff than we needed to physically run our school. So that's why we proposed a 15.5 reduction in staff for next year.
Yeah, it would, I'd seen mention of that on social media, and it may be one of those things like on the Dynamic Douglas page and things like that.
I don't go on that.
But I try to avoid it myself, but on any of the town pages or where you choose to post, it may help to explain, like, the decision wasn't made due to a, you know, budgetary, it was a, hey, we don't need these people, you know, or there isn't a need based off of enrollment, which is why we're doing the decrease.
We did that, we did that in our presentation.
Okay.
The only thing I'd add, Mr. Chairman, is that it's one thing to do exit interviews of people who've decided to leave, or even to feature successful alums. But there's a, there are strengths, and that's as important an inquiry as looking into the weaknesses. So for those kids who have done very well, what was it that inspired them? That's what I'm curious about. My school has admitted two Douglas High School seniors in the last three years. I've served for a long time on an alumni admissions committee. That's unheard of. For my school to admit two kids from a really small public high school in Massachusetts within three years, you're not Portsmouth Abbey, you're not, you know, you're not one of those great big institutions in the Catholic Church, but for Georgetown, they take two kids out of Douglas, what's, something special's happening. The admissions counselors see it, and of the 15,000 applications they get, they admit 1,000 kids, and they've taken a couple from Douglas. So there's something special. What is it? You know, when my public high school started getting traction with some of the top-shelf opportunities, we could trace it back to a few inspired teachers. God bless his soul, whether it was Hank Kuttu who taught Latin, or Frank Cooney, who was an English, AP English teacher. They found a way to get a core group of 80 kids out of 400 seniors to be really excited about being in school and to push the reputation of the school, and most of those 80 kids were student athletes. So there's, what is that formula? And is the athletic problem a really big part of the problem? And I have a hunch it is way more. It's like a multiplier of five to one. Because if I couldn't have done my sport, I wouldn't have stuck. I wouldn't have been interested in the rest of the day, really wouldn't have been. So.
If I didn't have my sport, I probably would have been in juvie, is where I would end.
But you know, the other thing is, you don't just want to, you don't just want to play or compete. It's horrible to go out and play for a team that goes 1-12, right? So I stuck. I stuck with my school, and I didn't go, and I had to pay 200 bucks, and every time I walked out on the field, you know, I had a pitcher who can't throw a strike, or the kids run the 100-yard dash in 15 seconds, which is really slow. You know, that's not fun. That's not an important part of, that whole way of inspiring people to compete to better themselves is part of a culture that gets created. And it doesn't have to be sports. It can be music, it can be theater, it can be any extracurricular above and beyond what's the core curriculum, and.
It finds its way into the classroom.
Just, if there are strengths there, let's find out what they are, because it may be that it's more effective to do more of the things you're good at than to attack the things that maybe you're not good at.
Yeah, one of the things that I think might separate the town for, the school district from others is the challenging path that the kids have access to. I mean, AP, you know, we talk about the grass being greener elsewhere. I don't know if there's a school out there that offers as much AP as.
I think we have a 13 AP class, is what Josh said.
Yeah, and every bit of one is tougher than the next, right? So you can only have so much, you know, there, but you guys, you know, flood that market. And I think that's, that is one of those things that if there's any parents out there that they can, whether or not Johnny, who's a superstar, you know, can get a good education at Douglas, they would equitatively say yes, having two going through the system right now.
So I think the biggest thing that I liked about your report, Matt, was, you know, there was kind of that underlying message that, you know, we're a few years away from some pretty good things happening if we kind of tend to business and do what we need to be doing, and everybody just kind of work together as best they can. And that was the whole point of us doing the override. Like, we wanted to not just, you know, kind of bridge a bleeding budget, but we wanted to get ourselves into a position that, you know, this board, whether we're still sitting on it in a few years or not, isn't going back to the community saying, hey, we need to do it again. So I mean, the budget that you presented, I like it, I'm in agreement with. But I mean, the underlying message of we really need to, you know, tighten up our belt straps a little bit and really be extremely transparent and willing to work with other departments and the department heads that are willing to both offer advice and listen to some constructive criticism, I think that's going to go a long way. Because I'd like to sit at this table in a couple of years and say, we have a surplus of X, now how do we want to do something with it? Mr. Cortez, you got anything?
I have nothing to follow up with, no.
Mr. Wong?
Well, I know there's some department heads out there that are sitting patiently, and they're not either the fire department or the school department. I want to steal your meeting, Mr. Chairman, but is there any other department head that would like to talk to us about challenges they see that might not be in this report? You're good, chief?
Awesome, thank you.
Single you out because we made eye contact.
Adam, I watched you turn. Good, all right. Mr. Hughes?
I have nothing.
Mr. Davis?
Is my mic working right now?
It is.
Okay.
And there's no buzzing.
I have a suggestion. Blackstone Valley Tech, why don't we put together an analysis of their health insurance and show them how they could save the half a million dollars and actually vote before their school committee, call before their board and make the presentation, and let them see if they're interested in that?
I like the way you're thinking, Hal. Aren't you feisty today?
You're so civilized. I'd put the presentation out there and then see if they want to talk to us after it's been out there for a little while. Uh, yeah, yes, that's very much.
Get on the agenda for their board meeting.
It seems as if I'm going to have to pursue an access to public records request in order to get the information I need, but that's okay. It is public record.
Mr. Steele might want to say something.
Yes, if I may speak.
Absolutely.
Yes, I just wanted to say that it's happened to me from the, I'm aware of it, some of the mischaracterized here this evening. My understanding is that, Mr. Wojcik, to make you aware that we did reach out to the vendor that you provided, aware that that conversation was had today, I'm also aware that we're waiting back to hear from them, and the request was taken seriously and in process. I'm aware that you had a conversation very important, I know, with Dr. Fitzpatrick. He's with the Suckin' Fangs Committee doing a presentation tonight, by the way, that's why he asked me to sit in here. And thank you for having me. But that was something I was taking very seriously, and to your footing, Mr. Davis, I think that's always something that is worth looking at, and, you know, any good savings is certainly welcome. So there was no resistance to that. We essentially followed up on the suggestion, and we're eagerly waiting to hear back from that vendor. Obviously, they have to make an analysis of schools and our staff and so on and so forth. I also think that it was somewhat mischaracterization to suggest that Douglas is a small shareholder in being, oh, students share the fourth largest town by population in our school. We represent 9.8% of Christian population, 122 kids, so by no means are you a minority stakeholder, if you will, in fact, you're the fourth largest. And obviously, something that we also take seriously, whether we're the smallest or the largest, that we, you know, expressed an interest as far as I can remember back at 1.5 years, of trying to be good partners with not only Douglas, but all of our member towns. As far as the budget request for the 11%, you know, I think it's somewhat misleading to the public to suggest that the Douglas Public District is asking the 1.5%, Valley Tech is asking for 11.1. I know from Dr. Fitzpatrick's presentation to the finance committee that we went through our budget in detail. Obviously, the one factor that's significant in there is increasing enrollment, not only school-wide BBT, but Douglas is also increasing enrollment. There's no doubts of participation about the state's formula in terms of how much it has been shifting to the town. In fact, I heard a very nice rationale that tonight, it was not just happening with BBT, but the chapter 77, we continue to shift the burden to the taxpayer. And in this case, I believe for Douglas, with the adjustment in their per-people assessment, I think you're up about 1,074 per student. And of course, multiply that by 122 students that can have, it's not a small number, and we're sensitive to that. And also, you know, with our budget building, 95% of it was attributed to the greatest health insurance and transportation, and ultimately, there's a minimal control over. Our teachers, I think, a 1.5% increase this year, so there's a claim of raises happening there. They agreed to a adjustable grid where they agreed to 1% in years, and only if we achieved all of our expected state revenues, would they possibly get more than 1%. So it's conservative there. And also, I know this has been a topic many times, that Valley Tech is an autonomous school district. Two things, is it one bite at the apple, right? So we will never have, we don't have the mechanism to come back and ever ask them in the middle of the year if, you know, we don't have enough funds. But more importantly, or more to the point, is that as an autonomous school district, all of the costs, everything from insurance to snow noise removal, eventually playgrounds, utility facilities and so forth, the local, the county.
Is that a detector?
And so comparing the moneyless percentage to 100%, and then suggesting that we're the worst of the cost, I don't think that's a fair or accurate representation. I certainly have not lost the challenges of balancing a budget, and particularly what you're trying to do, I'm very sensitive to that. But I just think that the comparison to nature of the relationship wasn't quite characterized accurately tonight. Mr. Vieira came over earlier this year, certainly was always welcome at our school, and one of the things that we talked about was how we could talk about these programs that are exactly like what you're talking about tonight, attractive programs, and like, dance with Douglas Public Schools, we'd like to be a good partner with you on that, as we have several other other member school districts, and help you create your own professional career technical programs and so forth. We have many kinds, extended the olive branch here for the bigger markets, and that's it. So I understand that the budget request is not welcome, and I get that. What bothers me tonight is that I don't know, I can say to you that we want to be good partners, but we want to have a relationship.
You can say what you will, but you really, really don't know me very well. If you think you can sit there and say, I've mischaracterized something, I'm one text away from the people you need to talk to. One text. I sit on the board of directors of the entity that made you the offer. Did BBT reach out to you today? They claim they are waiting to hear from you. No, I have nothing in email, no voicemail either. So I don't know who's mischaracterizing what, but make sure you really know what you're talking about before you tell somebody they're mischaracterizing the facts. I have the facts. I have the email. Dr. Fitzpatrick said that he only listened to us as a courtesy, and then he dismissed everything else we said after that. So we will very soon be able to put all the facts on the table. You are overspending, and you're not willing to talk to us about reducing that spending. Until my consultant says he's heard from you, that is the truth. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I know the folks were working on it, and I don't know what the conversation was that I could have talked to Dr. Fitzpatrick, and I don't care if it's important, but I can tell you that the rest of the conversation, I think, in my opinion, the spirit is that it's not the kind of relationship that we wish to have, or that we tried to create.
If I could, quickly interject. It's, I appreciate the words and the sentiment that are coming from you regarding you want to be a good partner to the 13 communities that BBT is servicing. But being in the business world, coming with double-digit increases in your budgetary expenses based off of your not maintaining your own fiscal controls or doing your due diligence where you can cut costs, that's not being a good partner to a community. When I can only give my local district a percent or a percent and a half, you know, which services the lion's share of our students, you know, or kids that are in educational age throughout the community of Douglas, and then to have you come to me and ask for 11%, it's, it's almost insulting. Because I, I work for a multinational company, and I can tell you in all honesty, our budget has never gone up in double digits, ever.
Our budget increase is a 3.1% increase this year.
But you're, overall, your cost to the town of Douglas has gone up 11%.
I understand what you're saying, and I must point out that there are aspects of that that you know that you don't control, to say.
Well, I mean, here's the whole thing. You're growing at a rate that was higher than what our health insurance was, and we canned our health insurance and did it ourselves. So I mean, you're kind of understanding the trend that's going along with that. If any one of my vendors, because for all intents and purposes, I look at BBT as a vendor to the town of Douglas, you're providing to us the service for our students. But if any one of our vendors came to us and said, I'm increasing my cost to your budget by 11%, we'd show you the door. Unfortunately, we're bound into this contract where we can't, because, believe me, if that opportunity presented itself to where we could say, we're dropping BBT, and we'll go to Bay Path, and they're only going to give us a 2% increase every year, you'd be history, pal.
Our major insurance carrier, what was it, you're saying, increased this year?
Yeah.
That's, you know, that's nice, but if you're high and you stay high, then you're too high. There's a theory that maybe the carrier pigeon got shot.
That's happening.
They're an attractive target, shooting the carrier pigeons. All right, I don't really think there's anything beneficial coming from this.
No, I'm just, I'm just going to end up getting my Irish up, and I don't need that today. Does anybody else have anything?
Just question on the 11%. Does 11% just apply to Douglas because more Douglas students are going there, or is that the overall budget increase of, for the Valley Tech?
Oh, now you've done it. I was hungry on heaps.
Valley Tech's budget increase is 3.1% this year. It varies from town to town depending on the state's employment contribution calculation for each member town.
The world's most interesting selectman is fired up this evening.
He's in a different room.
He is, he's in a different room, he's got different background, his mic is clear, there's no fan.
I'm sort of a freelancer over here.
Did that answer your question, Hal?
Yes.
Do you have any follow-up questions, Hal? All right.
So, Matt, the budget process from this day forward, what are we looking at?
Well, you have another, your regular business meeting scheduled for April 6th, so I would encourage members to review the details, at which time you would make some kind of motion on what it is you want to send to Finance Committee for their public hearing on April 13th. So we're rolling along pretty quickly here. So you had a second bite at the apple, and Finance Committee, it seems to me that their intention is to take your budget up and make recommendations on the entire warrant, all in one meeting. Either that, or deal with the whole thing and then have another meeting where they just make their recommendations, but very fast-track. They got to get the flyer out. They got to get the flyer out in time for the public to have ample notice. So you do have a meeting scheduled for seven days hence.
Has nobody has anything else to discuss? Any of the department heads have anything else they want to throw at us? Gene?
No, I'm good.
By the way, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out, like I do every year, how essential Gene is to this process, and I can only get it so far, and I'm very blessed to have Gene here to consult with, to review, because she has a good mind for detail and picks up on all the important things that need to be sewn up. And also to thank all of our department heads who have interacted with the document, interacted with me and Gene in a way that has been, you know, very smooth. Information's come very quickly and accurately, and we were able to put this together pretty quick. Our delays are often driven by the major accounts setting rates for us at the very last minute. So it's hard for me to give anybody any guidance on what's available for budgeting until I know what it is to pay those necessary fixed costs of government. So it's been a dramatic, quick run-up while we're negotiating with collective bargaining units, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm really, to the extent that this is good work, it's the good work of your department heads and your finance director. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Gene, I just want to go on record, I've heard Dave, they found money like four times.
Now I have something to say.
Just felt the bus roll right over me.
Dave knows that's at least a 20-minute explanation, right?
All right, well, seeing as nobody has any questions or comments or points of clarification, I'd be open to a motion for adjournment.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, I...
Phone a nine.
Cortez, I.
Dave is aye.
Morse aye.